Good afternoon. I call this meeting to order. Today, we have three items on the agenda. And I will appreciate if we hold all the questions after the presentations. And we will begin this meeting with the King County Deintensification Shelter in Renton. And I want to welcome Mayor Pavone. Hi, Mayor.
Hi there. Hello, Council President. Are you ready for me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, well, welcome, everybody. And thank you for joining us, all the King County representatives. We really appreciate that. So I'd like to say, Renton is a diverse community. It's compassionate, multicultural. We believe in serving all of our residents, no matter their race, religion, or financial circumstances. We have tried to bring that attitude to how we treat our most vulnerable population. We partner with Reach and other providers, contribute financially, and have strived to assist them. And we are extremely grateful the county was able to provide some financial assistance to Reach recently. For these very reasons, we did not bring a "just say no" attitude to the shelter operation. We took seriously our role as a regional partner, and we still do to this day. But we also have to make this an honest dialogue. Renton is simply not equipped to handle more than tripling of our prior homeless population. We can't just turn a blind side to businesses, neighborhoods, and chamber leaders that are bringing us major concerns. And we cannot be expected to turn this facility into a permanent provider of shelter. We have indeed stepped up to our role as a regional partner, but partnerships inherently require cooperation and agreement between both parties. It's not fair for Renton to do its part, on one hand, without written assurance on the other. It's not fair for Renton first responders to become the new law enforcement emergency call center when incidents arise. For example, the Renton Regional Fire Authority had received one call to the Red Lion Inn since 2018 and has received 18 calls in the span of just two weeks. So you're going to hear today about challenges that we have faced and concerns we have. And I believe that it's a healthy thing because we have to deal with one another with candor. But before I turn it over to Council President, I want the council to know that it's my sincere hope this dialogue builds a foundation for striking a workable written MOU with King County and that relating the issues at the Red Lion and the surrounding areas leads us to security and enforcement plans that rise up several levels from what we're seeing now. I'd like to now turn it back over to Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pavone. First on the agenda, we have Daniel Malone, and I don't know if I pronounced your name correctly or not, but he is the DESC Executive Director. Welcome, and thank you for joining us.
Thank you very much, Council President. Thank you all for having me part of your meeting today. I think I was asked to provide an overview of the work that we're doing in the shelter there. And so I'll just give you some highlights and then be available for answering questions when the time comes for that. So again, my name is Daniel Malone. I am Executive Director of DESC. We're a nonprofit social services and behavioral health organization. Most of our program sites are in the city of Seattle. We do some regional work across King County in providing behavioral health crisis work countywide through the operation of the Crisis Solutions Center and a particular component of that known as the Mobile Crisis Team that is summoned by police and fire units around the county to help them when they're dealing with somebody in behavioral health crisis and they're looking for an option other than jail or a hospital to take the person to. DESC operates many programs, and all of which are aimed at a very specific subset of the population of people experiencing homelessness, and specifically that of people who are adults with disabilities. Predominantly, we're serving people who are average age over 50, who have one disabling condition or more, including things such as serious mental illness, substance addiction, complex medical problems, mobility impairments, and numerous other kinds of conditions. That's the target population for our organization. Some of the work we do beyond the crisis behavioral health work includes operation of numerous apartment buildings that we call permanent supportive housing, where people with these kinds of conditions and histories live permanently and receive support in order to maintain their housing. We also operate outpatient behavioral health care services, as well as a variety of specialty behavioral health services, such as street outreach to people with psychiatric illness. The final major area of activity that we have are emergency shelters. We have operated five emergency shelter programs all inside Seattle. And the shelter that we're currently operating at the Red Lion in Renton is effectively a move of two of the shelters in Seattle to the Renton site so that we would have the staffing available to be able to cover the place and provide services to the people there. The main DESC shelter in Seattle itself is a regional service in that it is perhaps the, or at least a, primary outlet for all kinds of emergency and crisis services in the county. It is a place where hospital emergency departments, psychiatric units, jails will call as they are discharging somebody from their care when the person has nowhere else to go. And so it is a place that has a concentration of people with very high needs from all across the region. That shelter has long operated as a pretty intense congregate shelter, where people are in frankly fairly crowded conditions and sleep in dormitory rooms in bunk beds that are very close together, and then the other common spaces are also quite crowded. And so with this virus pandemic, we needed some other kind of option for people to be in rather than one of these extremely crowded locations that would have been ripe for a rapid spread of the virus were it to enter our population and could have very significant repercussions because so many of the people we serve have underlying health risks for more serious illness if they were to contract COVID. So we were seeking to have an alternative to the congregate shelter option, and we're looking for the ability to do so where we could place people in individual rooms so that they could essentially practice the same kind of social distancing that the rest of us are having to do during this time. And I just want to express my gratitude for everybody involved, including all of you, even if you're indirectly involved in this being a reality for us because it has made a tremendous difference for the people that we are able to serve. We have not had a significant viral outbreak. We've been doing a lot of testing of people who are staying at this facility and who had been staying in the facilities before coming here. There had been a positive, two positive cases in our main shelter location prior to the move there, and all the follow-up testing that's been done with everybody who moved to the Red Lion has turned out to be negative. Most recently, as about one week ago, Seattle flu study was onsite and tested 97 people in the same day, and all of those test results came back negative. So it's been extremely helpful to avoid the spread of this virus in the community at large and certainly among the people that we serve and are concerned about their well-being. When this option became available and I was able to have a preliminary conversation with Mayor Pavone and Bob Harrison, we talked a little bit about the population that we serve and the operations that we have, and I was able to express some of the things that might be expected. And I appreciated the mayor being able to put me in touch with both the police chief and the fire chief for follow-up conversations that we've had. And since then, some on our team have had a fairly regular communication with the Renton Police Department in order to understand what some of the observations and concerns are and have the ability for follow-up. We very much appreciate having an open dialogue and are eager to continue problem-solving, anything that might be coming up with our operation. Briefly, we have onsite at the building, a staff that is there to manage the general shelter operation of a minimum of six staff working in the quiet hours overnight to 12 staff during the day and evening hours. And then those staff are supplemented by quite a few other people, including nurses who are there five days a week from Harborview Medical Center, rotating doctors from Harborview, of course, janitorial crews, and some other specialty staff who we are citing. The group that I mentioned earlier, the Mobile Crisis Team that responds to police and fire units around the county, is currently dispatching out of the Red Lion so that they have a nearby presence to be able to respond to any needs that happen in the immediate Renton area in a faster way, including if anything were to arise for their services being needed in the Red Lion itself. The shelter operation that we run is usually something, as I mentioned before, where people are coming to us after having left some kind of crisis environment, such as a hospital emergency department or other place. And that means that very often, when we run a shelter for this population group, we see a fair degree of turnover, of churn of people, because people are coming there for a couple of nights and then looking to find somewhere else to be. And so on a typical day, doing shelter with this number of spaces, we would have 15 to 20 spaces that would come available for additional referrals. That has not been the case in this current era at the Red Lion. We're seeing available space there of zero to two spaces a day because the churn is just much, much lower, I think both owing to the fact that in the current state of the general community, there's very few options for people to go somewhere, and also it's a better arrangement for people. People really appreciate having these individual rooms and beds and modicum of privacy that they haven't been able to have before. We have, as I said, had some level of interaction with the police department on some issues of concern, and we are eager to continue those conversations with them. I know of at least one incident where we became directly aware of a guest of the shelter who shoplifted from a nearby gas station and was both arrested and discharged from the program. And we've received a couple of other concerns brought directly to our attention, including things like observations of people who were staying in the shelter, being out in public, not exercising proper social distancing from one another, concerns about people jaywalking, which is a totally legitimate concern, especially given some of the busy streets around there. And then a concern where a citizen called us up and suggested that a bicycle that had been stolen from their home might end up at our place, but we had no ability to understand if we had any relation to that specific issue or not. Those are the very specific things that have been brought to our attention, or some of the very specific things that have been brought to our attention from different quarters. And we believe that all of those things need to be dealt with by us in a transparent and direct way. And so I just say that in the spirit of candor and desire to cooperate with you all to make this work out as best as it can for everybody involved, including the broader community. And again, we're very grateful for the ability to be doing this operation there during this period of time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Daniel. I highly appreciate your comments. And if you can wait with us, we will have some questions at the end of the other presentations. At this time, I would like to give the floor to Leo Flor, who is the county's director of the Department of Community and Human Services. Thank you, Leo, for being with us.
I agree. I cooperate with you all.
You are muted, Leo.
This is for down the test in the camp for everybody involved, including the community.
There you go.
There we go. Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Mayor Pavone, and then thank you, council members, for the opportunity to speak and then to answer questions. What I wanted to do in following Daniel Malone is just to give a little bit of the overall regional context from my role as the Department of King County, or King County's Department of Community and Human Services, and I'm the director with this department. In terms of the overall approach, we now, in this pandemic, have multiple facilities that we are either operating or working with contracted organizations to operate. So that includes isolation and quarantine facilities now in the city of Kent, of Issaquah, and then Seattle. And then we have an additional facility in unincorporated King County in White Center. We have large-scale congregate facilities that are new in Bellevue, in Shoreline, and then another one in Seattle. And then we recently have also adopted the strategy of hotel and shelter de-intensification, and that includes the work of the subjects here in the city of Renton, for which we're grateful, as well as a hotel in Bellevue and then a hotel in Sea-Tac. So I just state that to say that five weeks ago, none of those were in operation, and I think it is a sign of the magnitude of the issue that we are jointly facing that now all of those exist and are either in operation or about to come into operation. The other thing that I think is really important context is it's actually not a lack of places that has really become the key constraint in our system as we work to flatten the curve and slow the spread of COVID-19, but it's actually staffing. It is the people who are able to provide services to vulnerable populations, and something that I think is analogous but more severe than what we're seeing in the hospital system, actually. It is the system of providers who care for, in many cases, persons experiencing homelessness or persons experiencing behavioral health crises. It is that system where the staffing is actually, well, it was always sort of a relatively low ratio, they are relatively low, are low-paid, and it's very high demand right now. So as we're vastly expanding the number of resources that are necessary to help people enforce public health guidance who do not have a home of their own in which to do that, we have this dynamic of needing a lot more space but also needing more people. And it is the fact that we needed more space, but people or staff was the difficult thing to be able to bring into existence right now that led us to this strategy, which is how do we put persons experiencing homelessness who live in shelters, where those shelters, it turns out, we have figured out are the exact types of locations in which COVID-19 can spread really rapidly and really dangerously, and we've seen that in long-term care facilities. And we have seen that in some shelter facilities. And I think something that we are, I think, we recognize has been effective so far is that in shelters where we got people further apart from each other, or in shelters where we got people into individual room settings, we see a vastly reduced spread of the disease. We anticipate that that will be vastly improved for people's health. And so as Mr. Malone mentioned earlier in his comments, one of the things that we've seen is, for example, in the Renton Red Lion, that we don't have positive COVID tests from the last set of tests that public health administered there. And we think that that is an important development relative to what we've seen in some of our other congregate facilities where we are seeing spread of the illness. And so I just wanted to express my gratitude on behalf of the Department of Community and Human Services for what I think is the remarkable ability to keep some of the most vulnerable folks in our community safe at a time where they are particularly at risk because of the setting in which they would normally live. So that, I think, is the larger context. The other thing that I want to just commit to again here today is, Mayor Pavone mentioned this, we share your belief, Mr. Mayor, in the importance of approaching this from a problem-solving and partnership perspective. And so expect fully to continue to hear from the city of Renton your candid assessments of what you think would be helpful as we go forward. And we are, for as long as we are working together on this project, committed to remaining a part of the conversation, committed to providing assistance or resources where we can in the context of this, what is, as the mayor rightly pointed out, a regional event that is going to transform the way that we all live, but is actively transforming the way that persons experiencing homelessness are certainly living across the region right now. So it is both, I wanted to just orient quickly to the overall scale instead of strategies across the region that the county is pursuing right now, then to just reaffirm for the mayor and for the council president and the members of the council that we do come here in a spirit of partnership, candor, and problem-solving. And then last, and to that end, we're happy to be able to support Reach very early on in March with the additional resources to help support that shelter that plays such a critical role in the city of Renton, and are happy to be able to work with Reach now to provide some additional resources that the mayor had identified in a letter that would be useful and helpful in the community so that we can meet our obligations as a partner across the region, but in the city of Renton specifically. So I'll conclude my comments there. Subject to any questions that you, Council President, Mr. Mayor, or council members may have.
Thank you, Leo. We are going to hold right now for our questions, but stay with us, please. Right now, we want to hear from our Renton Police Chief, Ed Ben Bailey.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Good evening, Madam President, council members, Mr. Mayor, and distinguished guests. This is Ed Ben Bailey, Renton Police Chief. I just want to say thank you to Daniel for your comments earlier. We've been three weeks in the process, and I know that my team, Deputy Chief Keys, Commander Wilkinson, Commander Harden, have had daily contact with your folks at the shelter. And as these problems come along, they've worked together collaboratively to try and address some of these issues. Just briefly, in the three weeks that it started, we've, similar to fire, we've had about 50 calls for service, that's direct calls to the location or nearby as a result. As we handled those, there was no major incidents, but as we got further along, there was a lot of issues with transient activity or people moving to nearby businesses. So we've worked with the nearby businesses as far as trespass issues and things like that, and making sure that the shelter organizers that knew what was going on and any names, and they've been very cooperative with us during that time. One of the most recent calls we've had with the stay-home and inability to trespass individuals, we have not yet come across somebody that was needing to be trespassed from the location, but we're currently working that now as we can't evict a person from the shelter. We're working with staff as far as the proper placement if somebody should violate their rules and not be allowed to stay there. So that is our current situation that we're working on with the staff there. We have not had, since this weekend, any calls regarding that or unwanted subjects. But since it started, we've had a really good relationship, daily contacts, and as problems present themselves, trying to be very quick and transparent with our response and taking care of the subjects that we're dealing with. That's what I have, ma'am.
Thank you, Chief. Now, we will hear from the other chief, Chief Marshall from the Renton Regional Fire Authority.
Yes, President Perez and council members, thank you very much. I would pretty much just echo the sentiments of Chief Ed Ben Bailey and say, you know, we have also seen an increase in call volume there. I think Mayor Pavone alluded to it. If you just look at 2018, 2019, from April 1st to the 21st, I think it was the date that we polled, we had a total of four calls, just address specific to the Red Lion. And in the same period of time for 2020, we've got 18. So about four and a half times the call volume that's there. And the type of calls that we're seeing are pretty indicative of those that we see from this cross-section of the population. We have not had to administer aid or transport, mostly just make initial contact and assessment. So the overwhelming majority have been calls that have not resulted in treatment or transport. And we've also had a few issues early on with the facility fencing that didn't allow for access to fire units, and then the locking of exit doors that created life safety issues. And again, I think it's really important from the onset, our responsibility is to protect every member in Renton regardless of their walk of life or their socioeconomic status. And so we just want to make sure that while the residents are there, that they are, that they're protected and they get the care. We're just, we do have a concern that long-term, if this turns into long-term, that it's going to put strains on our organization that are going to have to be mitigated at some end. That all being said, I want to say the one thing that I have appreciated is Daniel Malone since day one has been very direct and very transparent in how he has described what was going to be coming to Renton. And I think that, you know, I've certainly appreciated that tremendously, and we'll committed to continue to work in a cooperative manner with the county to help protect both the residents at the Red Lion and the rest of our community. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. And at this time, before we hear from our honorable guests, King County council members who are going down on the table that are joining us, I would like to open the floor for any questions or comments from council members.
Madam President.
Councilmember Perez.
Yes. Thanks, everyone who's presented to us tonight. Mr. Malone, I have a question for you. If a participant in the program is removed from the program, what's the, I guess, offboarding process for that person?
Yes, thank you, council member. We, it can be somewhat situation-specific depending on what the reason is for the person being exited from the program, but our typical stance is to help that person problem-solve their situation and find some kind of alternative shelter. My understanding is that thus far, we've had eight people leave the program for some kind of transgression or another, and that five of those people, we were able to place back into shelter at a different location in Seattle. The other three were not cooperative with that particular process. There are follow-up actions that can occur as well beyond that. Our program director recently had some interaction with Deputy Police Chief Keys about this very issue and shared somewhat more involved protocol than what I've just described to you. you. One of the kind of backend components of that is that if the Renton police end up encountering somebody who's been discharged from the program and that person is, you know, not behaving or is in some kind of crisis, then the police have the option to contact the mobile crisis team to come assist with intervention. And then that team has some other options, including helping somebody get shelter or go to the Crisis Solutions Center in Seattle or find some other way of making themselves less problematic in the area. So there are a few different strategies involved there, but our main stance is to help somebody find a more appropriate place to be than simply walking out the door.
Thank you.
Thank you. Council, I will let us speak first, Councilmember Van, and then Councilmember O'Halloran. Councilmember Van. No? Yeah, Van.
Okay. Thank you, Council President. This question is to you, Daniel, and Leo, if you want to chime in as well, but I actually have several questions. I guess, for me, really just kind of seeing this progression since April 1st, April 2nd has been kind of, honestly speaking, I feel like they're not just felt, the fact is, there hasn't been a lot of communication as far as on council side, as far as we getting information. And what I have gotten up to this point, I visited the site last week and learned that folks are not wearing masks and that I would, one of my questions is, are masks being provided to people? Secondly, the question of the capacity, I was told over the weekend by King County staff that we are at capacity, that is 200. But what it seems like, and not just seem, but in actuality, folks are actually walking out of the facility. So there's more than 200 and they're approximately 200, 230. So just to start, those are the two questions I have. One, are people required to wear masks? Are there masks available for folks? And two, what is the capacity at this point?
On the, thank you, council member. On our, on the issue of masks, we do now have masks that we have available for all of our clients, and we've issued those to clients. We have been grappling with the issue about mandatory use of masks and have not yet implemented a mandatory component for mask-wearing for clients in our various programs. Any kind of mandatory action brings with it the potential of what you're going to do when people don't comply with that. And so that's one of the reasons we're grappling with that as a very specific issue. But that is something we are trying to educate our clients about and model for them with our staff and just as we've been doing around issues of staying a greater distance apart from one another and that kind of thing. There's a broad range of level of understanding among the client population that we serve, and it is an ongoing process to deal with that. The capacity in the building, there are actually 225 rooms in the building there. Some of those rooms, we are using for other activities than for clients to stay in. So some of them are occupied by staff of our programs who are scattered about in the building, different areas. The Harborview medical personnel have some rooms that they're using for provision of medical care to people. So that's part of the thing. But the hotel is not fully occupied as much as it could be in terms of the number of beds that are in the hotel and number of rooms overall.
And council member, this is Leo, what I'll just add there and what our advice the DEFC has been, and also what we shared with Mayor Pavone, is in all of the facilities that we've now been operating, what we've found is that the total number of rooms is not the capacity of the facility. We actually learned this the hard way in a couple of the other facilities we're running, where if you fully occupy every room in a facility and then have a room become inoperable, have a room need to be cleaned in the event that a person does end up having a diagnosis, that you actually need to keep about 10% of the rooms in any facility free in order to either provide the ability to move somebody if that becomes necessary or in order to be able to provide some of the ancillary or supportive services that Mr. Malone was describing. So I'm also not tracking that every room in the hotel is occupied, but when we reported to the mayor of Renton that in addition to the difficulty of more than one operator in a place that the facility did not have additional space, that's the reasoning is we found early on actually in the Kent facility, that if we fully loaded every room, it actually put us in a position where we could not maintain operations when some, what turns out to be predictable things happened in terms of rooms going down.
So if I may ask then, sorry, just at this point, what is the total number of guests in the Red Lion Hotel?
I don't have an exact number for you. I believe it is slightly more than 200 people. Typically, on a given day, there are some people who won't be there for maybe 24, 36 hours because they might be at a hospital, for example. But in terms of like assigned beds, it's somewhere in that territory.
Thank you. Thank you. I will go right now with Councilmember O'Halloran. After Councilmember O'Halloran, Councilmember Benedetti.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I have a question regarding transport. My understanding is that there was some agreement that at the end of this crisis period, that the residents would be transported back to their home cities. And my question is regarding the eight people who were exited out of the program, were, I understand, five of them found housing, and that's wonderful. The other three, were they transported back to their home cities or are they in Renton? Or what's the process for that?
Thank you, council member. The short answer is I don't know where those specific individuals are, and I may be able to find out, although I suspect we don't possess that information anywhere. The, you know, the folks who came to stay in the shelter were brought from shelters they were staying at in Seattle, but that doesn't necessarily mean that those people are, you know, longtime Seattle dwellers. Many of them would have come to those shelters, having been referred from any number of sites around King County or, you know, even beyond sometimes. So we don't really have a concept of where do we, where can we, how can we send people back to their home cities? Because for some people, it's just not an operant concept that they even have a, something they regard as their home city. But our intent is not just to leave them hanging in the local area, and so helping people make some arrangement is what we're trying to do. And for those five out of the eight that I mentioned, we were able to get them to a shelter location, not a highly desirable place by frankly, but to a shelter that they agreed to accept that happens to be in Seattle. Sorry, I don't have better information about the remaining people.
So what, sorry, as we move forward through this, I think we have to assume that others will be exited from the program. Is there an intent to continue to help them find a more permanent shelter or to take them back to Seattle, to the shelter that they were at or what?
I mean, essentially, the intent is to try to get them back to a shelter that is somewhere. Most of the shelter is in Seattle. The shelter that they were at are the shelters that are now closed because those operations were moved to this location so that all the staff could be freed up to operate this particular facility. So it has to be that there's capacity in another shelter that we or somebody else operates, and capacity is quite frankly extremely limited across the whole system. Well, pre-COVID, but especially right now. And so our intent is to, you know, help people find a reasonable option for themselves, but we don't have the power to compel them to do something like that. You know, most people in our experience do want something better than simply, you know, wandering the streets. And so, you know, we use that in trying to help them find something that they are willing to accept.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Benedetti.
Thank you very much, Mr. Malone. I really appreciate you coming and talking with us today and also with you, Mr. Flor. So my first question is, given that this crisis could potentially drag so many months with different spikes in cases, what is the end game for this particular facility? And what is the plan to move folks back to a facility that is closer to where it is that they have the support and the services that are available through DEFC that is not quite so remote from the other supports and services that you provide? And hearing now that the shelter that they had come from has been closed in order to move the staff here, where is it that you would move them back to potentially? Or would it be the shelter that you had been operating, that you'd be moving them back to potentially at the end of a time when they would be here? Thank you.
I can, if you'll allow me, council member, I can jump in really quickly and then give over to Daniel. Part of, I think, the answer to your question about what is the end game, the Red Lion is a private lease at the, you know, agreement of the owner of the Red Lion, and so that owner has the ability to terminate the lease at the end of the lease term, which is 90 days. So I think that is something that we are well aware of. The question that you are also asking, council member, is one that is keenly on our minds right now. The justification and the rationale for moving from the congregate shelters to the Red Lion in the first place was that we believed that it would keep people healthier and safer and slow the spread. And initially, that indicates that we succeeded somewhat in that by the fact that we have not had spread at the Red Lion the way that we have in other facilities. And we do think that that is keeping residents healthier. One of the things that we don't know is what the future looks like, and you made mention, council member, to the possibility of multiple waves of the virus. And again, we are certainly consulting with public health right now and what that could look like and what the curve that everyone talks about now is looking like in our community and what the curve is looking like specifically for persons experiencing homelessness. I think some of the questions that we're asking ourselves right now are, are there things inside congregate shelters that have been transferred temporarily that we can do to help make them more secure when folks get back and then by security, healthy, more like individual environments? Are there other facilities that would be more appropriate in order to keep people healthy as they are experiencing homelessness? There are not a lot of options there, so we don't know what the answers to that are. But right now, the end game is the expiration of the lease, at which point, you know, we would facilitate transportation back to the original shelter. And the condition that I think informs that at the regional level that we don't know the answer to is what's it going to look like at the end of June? What will the level of spread be? What will be the extent of testing? What will be the ability to treat? But the thing that I think we are very clear on is the congregate shelter system that we as a region have supported, is probably not the right word, but operated for many years, was exactly the type of ground in which this virus could spread and that we are looking, you know, really, I think forcefully at any option that we can think of and one that we have not yet thought of that are going to allow us to bring people into a sustainable place where they can stay healthy.
Thank you. I just wanted to follow up with a recognition that, you know, for persons who are experiencing homelessness, you often have very vulnerable health outcomes to begin with. And so it's not just the ability of the disease to spread, it's the impact of the outcomes for folks who are experiencing homelessness if they were to get the disease. So that's something I absolutely understand.
Thank you. Are there any more questions from council members?
Yes, Council President? Okay, Councilmember Van. My hand raised again. Yeah, so again, thank you for answering the question. I do have a few more. I guess Councilmember Benedetti pretty much asked one of them, but my question is, what is the exit plan? Because I know that we talk about it's up to the Lion, Red Lion Hotel because it's private property, but after 90 days, is it that you are, like, what is exit strategy? What is the exit plan if there is any at this point?
Thank you, council member. And just, and I think this is, scope-wise, this is not just to DEFC Shelter at the Red Lion, but this really applies to the multiple shelters that we have either moved to larger congregate settings or to hotel settings, which now numbers well over 600 people that we've moved into different settings. The, we are developing parts of that plan right now as we see what's working and what's not working. I will share that three weeks ago, four weeks ago, one of our big pushes was to move to larger congregate settings where people's beds could go from six inches apart to six feet apart. That's something we did with another shelter by expanding into the King County Airport. What we subsequently saw is that while we may have slowed to some extent the spread, we still had significant spread in that expanded congregate shelter. And so what was, you know, what we thought was the most effective strategy, it was CDC advice to do that four weeks ago, is now no longer CDC advice and public health advice, where we are now receiving advice that where we can get people into individual settings that look more like the homes that most of us will isolate or quarantine in, that we should move towards that type of setting. So I know that that sounds perhaps evasive or incomplete, but I just am trying to be very candid with you, council member, that we are still learning what's going to be most effective for the thousands of people that we have in our community who sleep sheltered and unsheltered every night. And the end game, I think, we're very clear, is something that has to be sustainable, something that is going to require partnership with cities and something that centers and promotes the health of the persons that we are serving in the shelter system as well as the health of communities. So those are the principles, and we are absolutely actively working through right now the different types of scenarios, knowing that staffing is a critical constraint, as I mentioned before, and then as all governments know, funding is a critical constraint.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Councilmember Corbin.
Yes, I had a question about sort of the overall maintenance of the building. Obviously, when typically with a hotel, part of the value of having daily maid service is that it gives the maids, the hotel personnel, an opportunity to verify that the rooms aren't being abused, that they're being maintained well, that they're not overcrowded, that there's not, you know, an iron plugged into the wall and sitting on carpet or a bed or something like that. Are we doing anything like that with the hotel now? And I mean, I want to, I want to just acknowledge that people have a certain, you know, they're owed a certain amount of privacy, but at the same time, I would like to see this, you know, I don't want to end up with a hotel that can't be used at the end of this process. So I'm interested in knowing how well it's, how well we're able to oversee what's going on there.
Yes, thank you. We are going into every room every day, not for housekeeping services. Housekeeping services are happening in every room at least weekly, but not every day. But we do go in every day as part of the arrangement we have with people, both that we're going to look in on them and make sure they're okay, and also deliver them food so that they don't have to go out and find food. And in some cases, also delivering medicine or other And in some cases, also delivering medicine or other things that people need. But yeah, we are in there every day.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Any more questions? Okay. At this time, I will invite King County Councilmember Dave Up the Grove to address the conference. Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you, Council President Perez, members of the council, Mr. Mayor. For the record, my name is Dave Up the Grove, an elected member of the King County Council from District Five, which includes part of Renton, including the Red Lion. And I very much appreciate you inviting me to participate today. As you know, King County was home to the first cases in the nation. And county government is the jurisdiction with responsibility for public health. So with very little support from the federal government, King County's been blazing the trail for the rest of the nation. And my priority as a county council member is to support our public health professionals and give them the resources to do their jobs. We need to be strong, thoughtful, and serious, and we need to base our decisions on science and data because lives literally depend upon the decisions we make. As of 1:00 p.m. today, 416 people in King County have lost their lives to COVID-19. And these are peoples, moms and dads, grandmas and grandpas. And I know all of our hearts go out to the families in King County that are suffering from this incredible loss. On March 1st, the King County Executive, with unanimous support of the King County Council, formally proclaimed an emergency. And this gives the executive branch of our county government greater independent authority to take the steps necessary to protect public health. And specifically, it means operational decisions as to when, where, and how to deploy resources, such as de-intensification sites, are made exclusively by the executive branch. For example, not to pick on them, but I found out about the use of the Red Lion at the same time the city did. And I approached the decision the same way the city did, which was, of course, I wasn't pleased, but that I recognized that we all have a part to play to support one another during this unprecedented pandemic. And I'm committed to doing the best I can to make it work. This is just one of several facilities in my council district, all of which have naturally raised community questions and concerns. Now that it's been operational for a few weeks, albeit with 2020 benefit, or the benefit of 2020 hindsight, I personally think it probably was a mistake to take 200 of the highest need members of the homeless population from downtown Seattle and house them in downtown Renton. And I feel this way based on the regular communication I've been in with city government, the Renton Chamber, individual businesses. I've traveled by the site and through the community. And I hear and I understand the significant adverse impacts this is having on the city and local businesses. And while I don't have the answer, it has led me to conclude that the operational protocols and the security appear to be inadequate. And I also think that individual businesses and city government are bearing a burden that is not fair. And I want to be clear, I support de-intensification as a necessary and important public health strategy to not only save the lives of people without homes, but to slow the virus in the rest of the community. And the guests staying currently in the Red Lion are worthy of God's grace and deserving of our compassion and our assistance. But I also believe we need better security, more aggressive operational protocols. We need to compensate the city and potentially businesses for adverse impacts, and we need to end the use of the facility as soon as it is feasible. And we can do these things and still provide the necessary public health support to this vulnerable population. One point that's very important to me, it would be wrong for King County to use emergency powers during a pandemic to avoid zoning and permitting requirements and then continue to use the facility after the emergency is concluded without complying with zoning and permitting. I also think that'd be inappropriate, given that Seattle, where these folks were transported from, also has plenty of hotel space available. I also believe King County should enter into a written memorandum of understanding with the city that includes commitments to key operational issues. And to this end, I prepared three amendments to our upcoming emergency budget bill. The first amendment would prohibit any funding for the site until the county and city have a signed MOU that includes mutually agreeable operational protocols, site security, return of site plan, resident return transportation requirements, community engagement, those sorts of things. The second amendment I've prepared would prohibit any funding for a lease at the site that extends beyond the current 90 days unless approved by the King County Council. And the third amendment I've prepared would create a $500,000 fund to reimburse cities for documented costs of emergency response to facilities like this during the pandemic. And I want to note, if that amendment is unsuccessful, I'm still hopeful that some of the federal cares funding could be provided by the state or the county to cities like Renton to assist with your COVID-19 response costs. I'm very thankful for some of the positive steps the executive branch has already taken. For example, Leo's department is providing some important funding to assist Renton with homeless services at Reach. And the department's contracting with the Yankee Diner for food service, which is going to help support an additional local business. I want to finish just by saying I will continue to advocate for our community, help facilitate communication, and constructively engage to resolve concerns. Our community will get through this. This is just one small part of a much larger challenge we are sadly facing as a community, a state, and a nation because of this pandemic. And with all of this work, we will balance our values of compassion, our commitment to social justice in our most vulnerable, with our values of responsibility, safety, and fairness. And I appreciate the professionalism and thoughtful engagement on the part of the mayor and the council, and I really look forward to working together as we move forward. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Councilmember Dave Up the Grove. I, we will hold the questions after we hear from King County Councilmember Regan Dunn. But I just, on a personal note, I just want to say that I have known King County Councilmember for 20 years, and today I feel more proud than never before to have him as my representative. Thank you very much. Now, we have with us King County Councilmember Dr. Dunn.
Thank you, Council President Perez. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Very good. I'm a low-tech man in a high-tech world here, so I also in desperately need of a haircut, so I appreciate your patience. I think Councilmember Up the Grove said it well, and that was a thoughtful statement that he made. I think folks in the executive branch need to understand that, you know, the communities where these places are put and established are really going above and beyond the call of duty inciting these facilities. There is a lot that goes along with it, the costs of police service, business owners around the facility, the security concerns. There's a lot there. And so what I think City of Rent needs to hear maybe more clearly than I've heard tonight is that this is in fact just a temporary facility and that it will be moved as soon as this emergent crisis is over and we can continue operating the hotel. The costs are going to be covered and reimbursed, reasonable expenses made by the city, that every effort will be made to provide proper security, including, I hope, law enforcement, deputy off-duty who is on-site constantly. So what I can say to the City of Rent and your leadership is that, you know, it's unfortunate this had to happen, but it has happened in many ways. This is unprecedented, certainly in our lifetimes. And so the good government side of me wants to thank you for hosting this in a way that is not totally adversarial, but somewhat compassionate. I know it was forced upon you, but I want to stand ready to make sure that this is temporary, that memorandums agreement are signed to the liking of both parties, certainly the City of Renton, that we move forward as quickly as we can to get this done. So I'm happy to entertain any questions if and when Council President allows them.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Dr. Dunn. So at this time, I'm open the floor for more questions for councilmembers or comments. Councilmember Vandeget.
So we've definitely heard from the police and the fire in terms of some of the impacts. What, it sounds as if our two county council members have heard also from members of the business community. I'd like to hear a little bit more about what they've been hearing about impacts on the members of the business community, particularly if that has been impacting any of our small businesses, which are also vulnerable at this time. Thank you.
I'm happy to jump in with that. You know, I've heard from the chamber director talking about this shared commitment, much the way the city has, wanting to be good partners. But I've also heard specific anecdotal stories. For example, there's a Wells Fargo nearby. Wells Fargo has had to hire an additional security officer because of some issues that have occurred at the ATM machine. I've been told that Wajamaya has had to purchase and put porta-potties out front because of the problems being caused by people coming in and using, requesting to use their facilities. And I've heard anecdotally about increased panhandling and traffic outside of both the Walmart and the Safeway, as well as increases in graffiti and other anecdotal stories of body waste, bodily fluids in areas that would be traveled to go to and from businesses. So those are some of the examples of the kind of concerns that I've heard.
Thank you, Councilmember Dave Up the Grove. Councilmember Van.
Here. I don't have much to ask or add to that. The, obviously, the hotel is in Councilmember Up the Grove's district by a few miles, but I have heard some concerns about human waste from a couple of.
You can have it if you want, Regan.
I love Renton. Give me more Renton. But yeah, it's a concern, and we need to take into consideration the legitimate concerns of the business owners as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Van.
Yes, thank you, Council President. And thank you, Councilmembers Up the Grove and Dunn for being here tonight. My question is, and I appreciate what you will be, Councilmember Up the Grove, for providing amendments and so forth that you'll be passing, trying to pass at council. But my question is, currently, what are some, what can we expect as far as mitigation, as far as from the county assisting us? And in terms of, you know, currently, what's in store for us, right? What are some of the mitigation? And then, of course, will county be able to provide additional grant help during the phase-out? And I guess that would speak to your amendments. And lastly, as Councilmember Up the Grove mentioned about the Yankee Grill, my understanding is the Yankee Grill hasn't had, they haven't even gotten a contract with the county. So those are some of the concerns because, you know, if we're talking about even us not getting our MOUs, I'm just trying to see how is King County working about to making it equitable and making it very much transparent with our community here.
I'll start where you ended and work backwards. We absolutely should be equitable and transparent. Those are values that should guide our decision-making. I think you stated it very, very well. I was under the impression that the Yankee Diner was providing meals, and so I'm troubled to hear that, and maybe we can get an update from the county. I had personal conversations with our Director of Facilities on behalf of the city and behalf of that restaurant to make sure that would happen. I'd be disappointed if that hasn't happened.
Well, they are, I'm in the structure, they are providing meals, my understanding, but they even haven't even gotten a contract signed because King County said they're too busy. So that's concerning. I mean, just like the MOU here, we don't have sign.
That's very concerning. I agree. Councilman Dunn and I, I'm sure, will follow up on that one together to make sure that happens. In terms of mitigation, the county, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but our Department of Community and Health Services, out of recognition for some of the impacts, is providing additional funding to the city, in particular to help, I believe, to help you with Reach, to help fund some of the extra impacts you're seeing there. And if Leo's still on the line, he still, he may be able to communicate. That is funding above and beyond the traditional competitive funding rounds that is specifically for the City of Renton because you're hosting this facility. I'm not aware of anything specific, and that's why I would like to create a pot of funding at the county in order to provide mitigation, not just for Renton, but if there are facilities that are cited using emergency procedures where the permitting and zoning doesn't have to be complied with, I think those facilities are different than other facilities and are worthy of specific mitigation. And if my colleagues go along with the budget, we create a pot of funds that then, as specific costs are identified, they could be driven out, whether it's around an isolation and quarantine site in Canton, Seattle, or whether it's the intensification sites. If there are documented expenses for local governments as a result of our deployment of those, we should be covering those costs. I'm not sure if that amendment will pass. If it doesn't, as I mentioned in my opening comments, the federal government is giving the county and in particular the state a whole lot of money that has to be spent on COVID-19 response. But the only cities that get it are the really big ones, those over $500,000. I believe the state or the county should be helping out those small and medium-sized cities, cover your costs, and that could be a source of funding to mitigate the impacts potentially if a specific fund in our current budget is unsuccessful. But I don't think that the city government should have to pick up increased costs to your emergency responders because of our locating this here using emergency procedures. I'm a little nervous about a slippery slope. I don't know that always applies just because there's a facility that happens to be owned by the county that happens to be in a city. The county shouldn't be treated differently than any other business, but this is different because this was an emergency sighting where we didn't go through those normal procedures. So I think it is appropriate in this case to cover any and all costs that are identified.
Thank you, Councilmember Up the Grove. Councilmember Dunn, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, Council President, you can hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Just so I'm clear, I do support Councilmember Up the Grove's amendments. I think they're very thoughtful. I had a chance to review them earlier today. And including mitigation pot of money, that is a natural. And as you know, there's about $260 million going to the five jurisdictions in the state that have over half a million dollars. But we are actively advocating for pass their monies as well. So I don't, I think it's likely to pass, Dave. At some level, I think it is likely to pass through, and that we should be able to make that available. So the key then from Renton's perspective is to make sure that the expenditures of money are well documented, certainly from the governmental units, and as well as any substantial incurred of costs by the local private sector around the facility as well.
Thank you, Councilmember Dunn. I know that the mayor wants to also participate, but I would like to take this moment to say that definitely what we have heard from the community, and you already talked about that, is bigger concerns about future planning. And again, we're talking about transparency. And yes, we know that there are several facilities around King County, but most of them are isolation and quarantine sites. This is, this facility is a shelter. People can come and go as they please. And we know that there is another one in Zetaq and another one in Bellevue, but no one is as large as the one that has been placed in Renton. And again, South King County is not the same than the rest of the county. There is not, we know that the equity is not there. South and north and east and west is not exactly the same. And of course, this hit us very hard, and we want to play a part in this. We know that this is an emergency, but also we need to understand that the City of Renton do not have the level of resources, not nearly that other cities in the east side or in Seattle have. So this has hurt a lot our community, and especially because this is just three blocks from a neighborhood. I mean, South neighborhood is right there, and obviously, they have certain level of fear, not just the business community, but also our residents. And the residents that live in South Renton and North Renton are longtime residents of Renton that love this city and would like to see it grow and be as healthy as possible. So while I appreciate both of you, your advocacy for the City of Renton, I also, I'm eager to see that memorandum of understanding being signed as soon as possible because I still don't understand what it has taken so long for us to be able to complete that. And with that, I will let Mayor Pavoni to have the floor.
Well, thank you, Council President. And I want to thank you all for being here today. I have appreciated what you've. I have appreciated what you've done, Daniel Malone, and thank you very much for, Leo, for coming and talking to us today. And I really want to say I appreciate our council, King County Council members. Both Reagan and Dave are huge supporters of our community, and I can't tell you how much I appreciate the support. What I will say is that, and to answer the question I believe Councilmember Benedetti asked if there were other issues besides police and fire. And I can say, you know, without piling on and getting too far under the weeds, I'm receiving daily emails from individuals. This is impacting. One more than the rest has been the neighbor who owns Renton Village and the Evergreen Tower. He's actually had to hire security, and they have now a closed facility to protect the tenants there. They have 24/7 security in the building. They've had to deal with drug use and all kinds of individuals in the building. The trash and graffiti around the building has been quite immense, and he's actually keeping a running total of the expenses that he's paying. And then in terms of the businesses in the downtown core, I've had numbers of them reach out to me with different experiences. And being a business owner myself in the downtown, what I can tell you is we've got security cameras that look out behind a gated-in area. We probably have one visitor a year that wanders back there and opens doors and looks through things. You know, and it comes up on our footage and we see it, and that's about it. And since the facility's been placed there, it's a nightly occurrence. And the kind of stuff that we're dealing with in that gated area is repulsive. So, and that's just my experience, as one business in the downtown core. So, yes, this is not just about the impact that it's having at the facility and on public safety. This is having a real impact on businesses in the downtown. And like Council President Perez says, the community that lives down there in those neighborhoods, they're being impacted also. So with that, I want to thank you all for being here. I really appreciate it. And thanks again for our council members and the representatives for King County. Thank you.
Madam President?
Thank you. Councilmember O'Hara?
Yes, thank you. So I was wondering if there's been any consideration given at the end of this 90-day period of finding a hotel in Seattle where people may be more familiar with their surroundings and the services that are available, having been in Seattle, and relocating at the end of 90 days to another facility closer to where they originated, being that there are many, many hotels now that aren't seeing regular tourism and could be available closer to where these, this population originated. Thank you.
Is that for Councilmember Dunn and I or for the?
For whoever, and Leo, I will say.
I'm sure Councilmember Dunn and I are all in on that one.
Okay. Whoever has an answer.
Thank you, Council President and Councilmember. We are actively continuing to look for additional hotel facilities in Seattle right now. And in fact, multiples of them. We do really see that this has been an effective way to keep people healthy and by inference, to keep people alive during this period.
Thank you, Leo. I appreciate your answer. And once again, I just want to reiterate that there are some answers that more than anything is not that we don't want to play our role on this. We want to be very supportive, but when I hear there is not a plan, it's kind of concerning. So while I appreciate that you give us the information that we have to wait to see how, if the flood curve is as flat as we think to move to the next step, if we get to know, for example, how many people are there? How do you control who comes and goes? And if someone goes and doesn't come, that person is going to stay in Renton. So we make sure that, you know, it's a little bit uncertain when we ask how many people are in the facility, and we are like, we don't know. Normally, when you have guests on a hotel, you know how many rooms are occupied and who is in each one of the rooms. So those kinds of answers will certainly be more comforting, I will say. And as we mentioned, transparency again is key on this type of situations, and we will appreciate it. Councilmember Van, I know that you have another question. Councilmember Van?
Yes, thank you, Council President. Yes, this is just an observation also, because I was able to speak to King County staff over the weekend. Callie was very informative. But I realized that the meeting, which I haven't had attended, the Wednesday meeting, is about 30 minutes long, and there's a few other de-intensification or facility or quarantine sites that we talk about. And I was hoping that you two councilmembers can advocate and just have at least an hour, because usual meeting is an hour, and I think we deal with the many issues, not just the Renton site. Because I feel like with the folks of a tenant have asked me, you know, with 30 minutes, you can't really get a lot of questions answered. And especially now that we're going to more critical phase of this project.
Thank you, Councilmember Van. She's talking about the meeting that King County is having with the South King County every Wednesday, and it's hosted by Callie, so I will leave it there. At this time, I also want to appreciate and thank all our partners, including the Renton Chamber of Commerce, for the work that they have done to advocate for the city and help our businesses during this transition and this period that has been, again, unprecedented. And once again, to the presidents of the neighborhood associations that surround in this area for their patience and for their collaboration with us. We know that information is very important at this time, and that's what we are asking. And I'm gonna leave any other council member, in fact, if they have any comments or question at this time. Councilmember Benedetti?
Yes, there's been a mention of the need to get an MOU written, and I'm wondering if we can, if somebody can speak to what challenges exist to getting that MOU and what the timeline might be to having that ready and ready to sign. Thank you.
Thank you. I heard, Councilmember of the Grove, that you mentioned that you are gonna bring this MOU to the table. Are you correct? Councilmember of the Grove?
One more time. I did not answer that. I'm sorry.
Councilmember Benedetti is asking about the MOU. What is taking so long and when do you think this can be done?
I'm not a party to that. That would be between our executive branch and your executive branch. And so I think those two parties can speak to it much better.
Okay.
Your mayor or representative of the county's executive branch.
Leo, do you have an answer?
Thank you, Council President. I do see Mayor Pavoni, who I believe is a party, and then I've just reached out to the Executive's Office to let them know about the prioritization and the import here. But the Executive's Office, I think, is doing the negotiations and would be able to speak for King County on that. And I've let Karen Gill from the Executive's Office know that folks will be following up here pretty quickly.
Thank you, Leo. Mayor Pavoni?
Yes, thank you, Council President. So it really does come down to some of the specifics in the MOU. There was, we put forth one that was quite detailed in terms of the use and the fact that it's not consistent with the zoning and a number of items in that. And the reply back was an MOU that was extremely watered down and vague. And so without getting into the, you know, granular details, the attorneys are working on it. It really does boil down to getting an agreement that they're going, that the county's going to follow through with their end of the conversation, which is when the 90 days is up, that we need to find another place. I mean, carrying this burden for 90 days will be enough. I think that that's us doing our part. You know, like I said in the very beginning, we wanted to be a regional resource and a partner in getting through this. But the concern is, is that there's going to be a lot of issues that we're going to be facing as a region and as a county and as a state. And this is one of those scenarios then, unless there is some guidelines around this, the pressure to take this situation that's not sustainable and move it out, there's going to be possibly bigger fish to fry. And we feel that the impact on the community is severe enough that that 90 days really is a timeline that we'd like the county to stick with, honestly. So that's one of the larger ones. And a number of other smaller details that the attorneys are working out. But mostly, it's for us as a community, getting through this and being a resource and a partner and knowing that we're going to need to help take care of the situation for 90 days will be a burden. It's going to continue to have its challenges. And I think that working with Daniel will be able to get through them. But at the end of the 90 days, it's kind of like probably somebody else's turn or someone else, somewhere else's turn, the financial toll. And frankly, the toll it's going to have on the residents and the businesses is going to be impactful. You've got businesses that are already, you know, gulping down water and heading down for the third time. And then you start compounding it with the issues that you have going on with the shelter and the issues that that brings. It really is, it flies in the face of decency at a certain point, so.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask you something? I think they did sign a memorandum of understanding with Bellevue. Am I correct?
Yes, and I don't have the specifics on it, but I do know that before they moved in, they had an MOU on one location, and there was a temporary use permit with another location. I don't know the specifics of them. I think our attorney has talked to them. But yeah, and it just, you know, once again, I don't want to go down the road of he said, she said, and get into those kind of issues as much as reiterate the fact that we want to be a partner, but this is having an impact on our community, and we need to have some relief at some point, and we need to have this agreement sunsetted and frankly, hold ourselves accountable, us as a government and also King County, so.
Thank you, Mayor Pavoni. Councilmember Corman after, Councilmember Corman, Councilmember Van?
So yeah, I wanted to thank everybody for their comments, the two King County council members for their participation. But also just to remind them, I think, you know, they probably are familiar with our plans, that that area where this hotel is located will be part of the solution for housing in Seattle. We are getting the new transit center. We're getting a bus rapid transit connection. It'll get people speedy connection. We're actually working on transit-oriented development, and we feel we can accommodate thousands of housing units down there. But what I really wanted to emphasize, and I'm not sure, you know, they'll understand it, but it's, we've got sort of, I would say, a tentative consensus from the community that this is something that we can pursue, that that's a location that's generally acceptable for the transit center. But I just don't want to spoil it by having like six months or nine months or a year of people complaining about this sort of change and this impact. Because I think, in fact, that would be, you know, that would, we'd end up resolving the short-term issue. And I get it that it's a health crisis right now. We have to resolve it. But if we let it go on too long, I'm just afraid we'll lose a lot of the headway we've made at getting our community to look at that area as a new growing area where we can put a lot more housing and a lot of affordable housing. So keeping in mind the big picture, I think it's important that we don't make the community down there, including both the businesses and the residents, weather too much pain in the short term.
Thank you, Councilmember Corman. Councilmember Van?
Yes, and then this question is actually for Mayor Pavoni because you were mentioning the attorneys are working on. Do you kind of have a timeline? Just echo Councilmember Benedetti, because I kind of work on timeline. Like, should we expect a week from now? Just kind of, I mean, you don't have control, but because the first day of operation was April 9th. So it's kind of like we're working backwards to put a contract. Usually, you have to have a meeting of the minds for a contract, and then you actually execute the contract, right? So we're about two, three weeks out, and that's totaling into our 90 days. Do you have an idea?
Well, Councilmember Van, this was done under emergency order, so they didn't ask if they could move in. It was done under the guise. So we have been trying to work through this issue from day one. So I can't speak for the King County executives, attorneys. I can only speak from our side and, you know, we are returning and getting back the information immediately. So the holdup is not on our side, is basically the way I could put it. I honestly don't understand what your question was.
Oh, I guess just the timeline, just so that for us to understand if there's.
I don't think we really have a control over the timeline. You know, when they're going to, when we all have an MOU in hand, I don't know, so.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, at this time, I just want to make sure that nobody else has more questions or comments. Are we okay with this? So we, I really want to appreciate Daniel Malone for all the work that you're putting here and helping us and working together with our chiefs. I know that they have, I very much appreciate it, all the time that you have taken to address their concerns. Leo, thank you for being with us today, and Renton is a very friendly city, and we are welcoming you guys, but we need to work together for this to work. And as always, a great pleasure to have King County Councilmember Devo de Grove and King County Councilmember Reagan Dunn representing us and being our guests. Thank you for your time and for your effort to help Renton in this situation. Okay, so I will continue with our agenda today, if that's okay. We still have time for more one item. I don't think that we will be able to get to affordable housing, so cheap, if we can move that from, to next week, we carry on the affordable housing for next week, but we have time for the levy. So commissary's levy spending update. Leslie, are you there?
I am. Good evening, Council President and council members. You will not see my face because I do not have a... I'm trying to share my screen. My host has disabled participant screen sharing, so I need to be able to share my screen. I think Jason needs to do that for me.
Okay, one moment.
Leslie, you're not signed on with video. I'm not sure we can share your screen.
Right.
Oh, all right. So I will... So that's the only way I can share my PowerPoint presentation?
Yes.
Oh. So do I need to have a camera for that, or do I need to restart?
Maybe I can share it. One moment.
Okay.
Apologize to the viewers at home. We got to find the record, and we'll be right there.
Okay. And I apologize as well. I did not know that I needed to have a video in order to share a PowerPoint. I'm new at this Zoom meeting, and I learn something new at every meeting I attend.
This is Kelly. It was an amazing PowerPoint, too. Council President Perez, I don't know, in the interest of time, if you would like to, unless Jason can get the president, oh, it looks like he might be doing it.
Here we go.
Thank you, Jason.
Okay, so am I able to?
Just tell me when you want me to switch slides.
Okay, could you put it into the? Okay, could you put it into the presentation mode?
Yes.
So it fills the whole screen? Perfect. Okay. Well, I have a presentation to talk about the bond project update. If you could flip to the next screen. My name is Leslie Betlock. I'm the Parks Planning and Natural Resources Director for the City of Renton. And I'm going to give just a little overview of how we got to where we are today. That started back in 2016 and 17. There were three steps to long-term sustainability that were identified. One, the BNO tax implementation, which occurred in 2016, and the Regional Fire Authority, also in 2016, and a quality of life initiative, which occurred in 2017. The city council appointed an 18-member Parks, Trail and Community Facilities Advisory Committee to identify the important gaps in our system and to identify criteria for project selection and a prioritized list of no more than 70 million. So the Citizen Advisory Committee identified two lists, a $70 million list with 55 projects, and that included major maintenance as well as growth in the system, new development, and a $14.5 million list, which included 43 projects and only major maintenance. In November of 2018, the council authorized 14.5 million for 43 projects. And all of the projects had been identified in the, it was the 2017 through 2022 CIP. The bonds were issued in March in 2019. And there's criteria around the spending of the bonds. 80% of the funding needs to be spent in three years. If you could go to the next slide, Jason. And in-progress projects that were already underway in the 316 Fund were reallocated to bond funding to increase capacity throughout the rest of the capital improvement program. What you have here in front of you, this list is the list of the 43 projects that were identified by the Citizen Advisory Committee and that council authorized to issue the 14.5 million dollars in bonds. The color coding just identifies the project type, whether it's a neighborhood or regional. Let's go to the next slide. And so the next actually series of slides is walking you through that list, that long list, so that you can actually see it better on your screen. And I can go through every single one of these projects. In consideration of time, I think it would probably be better to hit the lists that are, that we're moving forward on. What I will say is that you will see Coulon Park multiple times. And I want, there's actually 12 projects for Coulon Park. Coulon Park is a regional park. It's loved to death by the community and it is 52 years old. And so there's a lot of wear and tear on that park. Let's go to the next slide.
Okay.
Okay. So the first project that you will see here is a park, a project that's not bond-eligible. And I should say that once the bonds were issued, we, our team, worked with the finance department and we visited every single one of the 43 sites and met with finance on multiple occasions to identify which projects were bond-eligible and which projects were not. Projects that are not bond-eligible include projects that are routine maintenance, the parking lot and drive repairs at the Senior Activity Center is one of those, and also projects where we may not own the property outright, where we have a lease agreement or an easement. So this project, the $90,000 parking lot, was funded in our capital investment program. It's not bond-eligible and due to the circumstances of where we are with the pandemic, we've placed this project on hold. The next project, number eight, playground replacements at Cedar River Park and Trail Park, were two projects that were transitioned from capital funding to bond funding and they were completed in 2019. It's the next slide.
Okay.
The light system upgrade project is, you'll see that there are some projects, number nine, for example, that does not have a park identified. And that is because system-wide, these improvements at that very high-level 2017 capital investment program, six-year CIP, we know that we have to budget for it, we don't have a place identified. As part of this project, the bond project, we are going to be doing light system upgrades at Philip Arnold Park. We actually will be doing multiple of these bond projects at Philip Arnold Park and also at Kauanis Park. Number 10, this was a playground replacement that was originally funded in our capital improvement program and was transitioned to be covered by bond monies, which freed up funding for the remainder of the capital improvement program. Let's see, next slide.
Okay.
Again, this is the Coulon Park structural improvements, repairs. These were the projects at eight locations that were completed in over two years, in 2018 and 2019. And the repairs are identified as noted there at the eight locations. But I want to call attention to one in particular that we were totally unaware of, and it was the Tressel Bridge. We were in the midst of doing Tressel Bridge temporary repairs and the superstructure, the understructure holding the bridge was, it's non-supportive. We had to do an immediate assessment and we turned around and did change order to the contract to do interim repairs. And the structural engineer has indicated that there's three years lifespan left on that bridge. That bridge is the bridge that's immediately north of the North Coulon restroom. So the Coulon Tressel Bridge became a bond project out of necessity. We had not anticipated that. Can we go to the next slide, please?
Okay.
The Coulon Park lighting repairs, this also is not bond-eligible because it's just replacing LED bulbs throughout the park. So this is more routine maintenance. It'll be done in a couple of months. The shoreline and bank stabilization, this is a capital improvement project that we have on hold. The balance on this is a little bit less than what's reflected here because we transferred some of the funding to our Cedar River Tressel Bridge repairs, which will start shortly. This project is also a placeholder for doing some of our February 2020 flood damage repairs. Next slide.
Okay.
The sport court repairs at Teasdale Park, number 21. This is a project that's funded by our capital investment program that we will be proceeding with. We have done many repairs over the last 15 years. The court is beyond repair at this time and needs to be replaced. It's a tripping hazard, it's a safety hazard and a liability issue. Next slide.
Okay.
The number 22, it's not bond-eligible because this is, again, routine maintenance. The pathway, sidewalk, patio, boardwalk repair, this is a project that will be included as part of the much larger Kauanis Park improvements. And let me go over what is included in that, it's pretty substantial. It's ADA, American Disability Act, walks throughout the park from Union Avenue, parking lot renovation with required stormwater improvements, playground replacement and parent plaza with a picnic shelter, ballfield renovation to include synthetic turf in the infield, and multi-use field renovation, irrigation and electrical work, dugout renovation and backstop improvements, a building demolition, Portland Lou installation, sport court renovation and tennis court resurfacing. Kauanis Park is 55 years old. It's a beautiful park, but it's got aging infrastructure. Next slide, please.
Okay.
Philip Arnold Park, as I mentioned earlier, is the other larger bond project where we will have multiple improvements. Philip Arnold Park is also 55 years old, a beautiful park with significant aging infrastructure. This project will include an upper and lower walk access from the parking lots, ADA throughout the site, it's non-ADA compliant, a looped walkway system, a parent plaza adjacent to a playground replacement, picnic shelter replacement, a building demolition, Portland Lou, court repairs, and electrical surface water and irrigation. We have two major storm line breaks in the park, which is causing some flooding and those will be repaired. The playground replacements, this number 26, thanks to our Doug Levy, we have successfully secured a state legislative appropriation to replace the playground equipment at Coulon Park and that will be entirely grant-funded. The parking lot and drive repair, number 27, this will be included as part of that larger Kauanis Park improvement project. Next slide.
Good.
Cedar River Tressel Bridge, this is the project that will be commencing in a couple of weeks. These are major structural improvements to maintain the structural integrity of the bridge. It's located at Maplewood Roadside Park. Number 29, this is part of the larger Kauanis Park improvement package. We're finding, we can go to the next slide, we're finding that collectively, putting all of these smaller projects into one large project, one larger park project decreases design costs and construction costs because we're mobilizing at fewer locations and we're replacing aging infrastructure at our older parks. Liberty Park improvements, this is a CIP-funded project. With the exception of the play area, we're recommending that this project be on hold. And I say with the exception of the play area, the Liberty Park playground is now 23 years old. The lifespan of a typical play area is 15 years old. You may be asking, well, when was the last time we replaced a playground, other than the ones we completed last year? That was Kennedy Alliance Park in 2007. So we have over 20 playgrounds that need replacing. The parking lot and drive repair at Philip Arnold Park, this is part of the larger Philip Arnold Park improvement. Next slide.
Okay.
Again, you'll see Coulon Park, this is part of many structural repairs. This one is for a geotechnical study for a wall that is leaning down at the park near the Sailing Center. And we are likely going to have to phase many of the Coulon Park projects out in a five-phase program over a few six-year CIP cycles, just due to the financial impacts. Number 35, this is part of the larger Kauanis Park improvement project. And number 36, this will be allocated to a Phase 1 project. The city is under obligation with the State Department of Natural Resources under a lease agreement for the Coulon Water Walk. It starts where Ivors is, and we completed some of the work last year. Part of the requirement for the lease agreement is to remove the concrete walk and put in light penetrating material for fish habitat. That work needs to be completed by 2028. This particular project, this too, was an unknown project that came up through a new dive assessment completed this year. The underwater pilings at this location are 38 years old and they will reach their life capacity at 40 years. And so this project, this first phase will become a bond project and we are working with our structural engineer to come up with what's called a corrosion arresting program so that no further corrosion occurs and we can extend the lifespan out another 40 years.
Leslie, this is Julia. You're going to have to wrap it up. They're going to have to end the meeting soon.
Okay, I will. Next slide.
Okay.
Future playground replacements, this one is at Kauanis Park. Next slide. The light system upgrade is another project at Kauanis Park. And so this wraps up the projects that we'll be doing for the bond project. So if you could go to the next slide, Jason?
Okay.
We have completed, the projects identified on this screen were early wins for the city and funded by the bond program. And so that's about $2.7 million worth of early wins. Next slide.
Good.
These projects that you see here, the five bulleted items, are projects that we are currently working on right now. They are all under contract for design services and along with our staffing, the estimated cost is 13.8 million. Next slide. So we do have a shortfall of, identified shortfall of 1.9 million. We do, however, have other funding sources such as our Parks Impact Mitigation Fund, a Custer Fund, 2013 and 2019 King County Proposition Levy Funds, which will easily cover the project shortfalls. Next slide.
Okay.
And we can go through this next series of slides. These are photos of projects that were completed as part of the early wins.
So Leslie, if you want, we can go through the photos while councilmember asks for questions in the meantime, if you are okay with that?
I'm perfectly fine with that.
Okay, so councilmembers, do you have any questions? Here none. I just want to clarify for the public that the bond projects and the money that we're going to use for these projects are, is money that if we don't use during this time, we will lose it. So I just wanted to make sure that they know that even though we are expecting to have a little bit of budget restrictions due to the COVID-19 situation, this money that we're going to be spending during this time, again, is money that was asked on a bond and if we don't use it, we lose it. So councilmember McCraven, you have a question?
Yes, thank you. I heard you mention, Leslie, at two parks we're looking at installing Portland Lou, if I think I heard you correctly. Are there any additional parks beyond that, maybe outside the bond? parks beyond that, maybe outside the bond, that we would be looking at, um, Portland Lou locations? I'm specifically thinking maybe, uh, near downtown, or is that, uh, separate?
Well, that would be separate. Um, these are the first two parks that we're looking at, uh, as part of the bond project, but it's also a pilot program. So if it proves to be, uh, really successful, and we anticipate that it will be, and it will be reduced, uh, maintenance costs, then it's something that we can look at elsewhere throughout the system.
Great, thanks.
Okay, any more questions? Here none. I also want to, uh, clarify that at this time, our parks and trails are open, but some of the amenities on the parks are not open, and those are basically the restrooms, the playgrounds, and, uh, and the tennis courts. Basically, it is, uh, to keep with the social distance order, but our parks and trails are open for people if they want to go for a walk, as long as they keep the social distance. Um, if we don't have any more questions, Leslie, I want to thank you. Sorry for rushing you at the end, but this was very worthy, especially for our new councilmembers, that they were not part of the bond decision at that, so that way we were able to brief them and check where all of this is going. Thank you, Leslie.
Thank you very much. Thanks for the opportunity. I appreciate it.
Uh, and with that, I will, uh, move the affordable housing for next week, and I will see all of you at 7:00. This meeting is adjourned.